Well, I'll start again. We'll use these microphones. My name is Barbara Johnson. I'm President of the Minneapolis City Council, and we have a number of items to deal with today, a very full agenda. But the first thing we're going to do is honor a very long-serving city employee who is retiring and has been a part of the leadership team in the city for a very, very long time. And I'm going to read a resolution that will talk about just exactly how long. So Peter Ginder has been Deputy City Attorney for a very long time. He entered city employment in 1981, and he has been our advisor. The City Attorney's Office in Minneapolis is an extremely important part of our enterprise, and our City Attorney's Office is the backbone of the work that we do here as far as the legal enterprise, which is very, very important, of course, in our city. And so we have a resolution that we're going to present, and I will read it. It says, "Whereas Peter Ginder, Deputy City Attorney, first entered employment in the City Attorney's Office as a prosecutor in the Criminal Division on April 13, 1981, having graduated from St. John's University and the University of Minnesota Law School; whereas Mr. Ginder's extraordinary talents and skills were recognized and acknowledged from the start, and after mastering the craft of criminal prosecution, transferred from the Criminal Division to the Civil Division, where he was rapidly promoted through the attorney ranks and was appointed as Deputy City Attorney in charge of the Civil Division of the City Attorney's Office in June 2003; whereas Mr. Ginder has been involved in every major legal matter at the city over the past couple of decades, personally handling many of the most complex, high-profile litigation cases and other projects, and has consistently, throughout his 35-year tenure, provided the highest caliber legal services, advice, and guidance to the city and its leaders." Whereas Mr. Ginder has served four mayors and 60 city council members during his tenure, with Mayor Don Fraser and Alice Rainville as council president when he made his first presentation during a closed council session, all of whom have relied on his skilled counsel and advice; and whereas Mr. Ginder has been an outstanding manager and leader of the Civil Division, shaping and mentoring a talented group of attorneys, helping form the best civil law firm in the city and ensuring the future quality of the City Attorney's Office after his retirement; and whereas Mr. Ginder has the uncanny ability to remain calm and unflappable, and that's his trademark, that's his trademark, applying his vast knowledge of municipal law, recalling case precedents by name at the drop of a hat, and dispensing sound advice and leadership, especially in critical, high-pressure situations; whereas Mr. Ginder is also extremely effective at all he undertakes, from managing dozens of direct reports and hundreds of legal matters to such things as culinary skill, where he has racked up repeated awards in the office's annual chili cook-off and provided advice that has improved the pie crust-making skills of the current city attorney. Do tell her to use lard, is that what the... okay. All right. Whereas Mr. Ginder has exemplified all the values of the City Attorney's Office, the legal profession, and the best ideals of public service, including a commitment to the highest ethical standards and excellence in providing legal representation and advice; and whereas Mr. Ginder has dedicated his career to serving the public and has justly earned the respect of all who have had the privilege of working with him and of those with whom he has dealt; and whereas Mr. Ginder will be deeply missed by the city's elected officials, really and truly, department heads, staff, and fellow members of the City Attorney's Office as a legal advisor, colleague, and a friend; and whereas the city council wishes to recognize Peter Ginder's extraordinary contributions, career, and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor and the city council commend Peter Ginder for his dedicated and exemplary service to the city of Minneapolis and expresses its deep gratitude and appreciation to him for his outstanding commitment to the city. And be it further resolved that the mayor and the city council congratulate Peter Ginder for his many significant accomplishments and wish him much happiness and fulfillment in all of his new ventures. Thank you. Our city attorney was unable to be here today because of a family commitment, and so Mr. Spencer Cronk, who's our city coordinator, will read a letter from her.
Thank you, Council President, and on behalf of Susan Segal, our city attorney, she asked me to say a few words. She says, two words: thank you. Thank you for your guidance, wise advice, and counsel, for your leadership in the office and the city, for so generously sharing your talent and skill, for saving the city tens of millions of dollars and helping keep the ship of state on stable waters, for developing and molding a top-notch civil law office that would carry on your legacy of excellence and integrity, but most of all, thank you for being such an extraordinary friend and colleague. You are irreplaceable. All of her best wishes for fun and joy in your future. And on behalf of all of your colleagues here at the city of Minneapolis, we echo Susan's words, and thank you so much, Peter, for your dedication, commitment, and professionalism during your tenure at the city. Thank you very much.
The resolution and a night ring. And then we have a special presentation, because Mr. Ginder has 30 years of service, the Father of Water statue, which we're delighted to present to you. Thank you. I'd like to have a say a few words.
Having sat through a few of these and understanding that the council has a full agenda, and brevity is the better part of wit, I'll try and be short. I've been here a long time, and in fact, I was on the original Employee Advisory Committee that developed the Father of Water statue approximately 30 years ago, and I never actually felt that I would actually stay around long enough to get one, but I'm very pleased that that program went forward and that I'm able to receive one. Two things I would like to say is, one, it's been a tremendous honor and privilege for me to serve the elected officials and to have the opportunity to give advice and occasionally listen to. But it's been really a tremendous honor and privilege to do that, and you don't spend 35 years working at an entity like this without leaving with great affection for both the institution and all of the people that I've worked with. And I've had a tremendous opportunity to work with department heads throughout the city, managers, frontline workers, and have almost uniformly been just really pleased and surprised and gratified by the commitment that people have to the city of Minneapolis. And especially need to thank the people in the City Attorney's Office I've worked with. I will simply say that at this stage, there has never been a better City Attorney's Office in the history that I've been with the city, from top to bottom. The competency, the professionalism, the intellectual power, the commitment is just tremendous. And so I really want to thank those people because much of what I've achieved is only because I've been able to work with really great people. And finally, I want to say that to the extent that I've achieved something at this office, there's an old saying that behind every good man is a better woman. My wife, Jerry, has been a tremendous support, encouragement, and patience while I've done this job, and I want to thank her for that and thank all of you for allowing me to work for you. Thank you.
And we also have a guest from the Parkinson's Association. Is that correct? I'm going to come up. We have a unique position at the city of Minneapolis where, because the 35W Bridge is in our city, if we ask to have the bridge lit in a particular color to honor an organization, an effort, we have a city council resolution. And so this morning, we have the honor of recognizing April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Month. So why don't you introduce yourself and come on in the microphone?
Hi, I'm Erin McGee. I'm Program Manager at the National Parkinson Foundation of Minnesota.
Okay. So I'm going to read the resolution, and I'm not going to read every detail, but I'll try and get through this in a timely way. And it says, "Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a progressive neurological movement disorder of the central nervous system, 1 million Americans have been diagnosed with the disease. The National Parkinson's Foundation was founded in 1957 and is the only organization maintaining a singular focus on improving the quality of care for those living with Parkinson's Disease, and has an extensive network of chapters, support groups, and Centers of Excellence around the United States and the world." And it was founded in Minnesota as the Parkinson's Association of Minnesota and renamed in June 2011. It's the state affiliate chapter of the National Parkinson's Foundation and has, again, its central mission of positively affecting the lives of individuals and families living with Parkinson's through improved care and support, community education, engagement, and advocacy. And Minnesota ranks third among all states in the nation per capita of those living with Parkinson's Disease. So whereas in Minnesota and surrounding communities, they drive, the Parkinson's Association drives awareness and outreach by bringing together thought leaders on Parkinson's Disease and also pharmacists, nurses, rehabilitation therapists who improve patient outcomes and also act upon areas of common interest and concern. The National Parkinson's Foundation funds outreach, education, support groups, and a unique respite care program which reaches families throughout Minnesota. And in the coming year, the Parkinson Foundation will announce new grant opportunities to support individuals and families in earlier stages of the diagnosis. April has been proclaimed as Worldwide Parkinson's Awareness Month to help promote awareness of the need for a multi-disciplinary approach that includes local wellness and caregiver groups, as well as the need for increased research, education, and support to address the devastating effects of Parkinson's Disease. And the National Parkinson's Foundation will host a fundraiser on April 14, 2016 to highlight its education, support research initiatives, and ultimately find a cure for the disease. And as part of this special event, the I-35W Bridge will be lit in cyan. What color is that? Oh, okay. All right. Turquoise, I call that turquoise. Okay, okay, okay. To commemorate all of those whose lives have been impacted by Parkinson's Disease and also to be a visible sign of hope for a future where Parkinson's Disease no longer affects individuals and families. So therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that April 2016 is proclaimed to be Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in the city of Minneapolis. All residents are encouraged to participate in activities and events which support the fight against Parkinson's Disease and support efforts which aid and assist individuals and families living with Parkinson's Disease. So we will pass this resolution later as part of our agenda. Okay, cool. Great. Want to say a few things?
Sure. As many of you know, we have Michael J. Fox, Muhammad Ali, who are the big names with Parkinson's Disease, but we don't know how many people actually live. And we're hoping that the Senate has passed the bill, but hopefully the House will pass the bill to make a national registry for Parkinson's Disease and also MS. That way we can help target exactly where the needs are in Minnesota, in the rural areas. So we've got a lot of work to do, as we know, we've got at least 1 million, but we're guessing. So we're hoping that this will get passed and we can help people in need.
Thank you. Thank you very much for joining us. Nice to meet you. Thank you. Before we begin our council meeting, I've been asked by one of our state legislators to allow her to speak before we start the council meeting, and so I'm going to recognize State Representative Karen Clark, who's going to speak about an item that's later
Thank you, Council President Johnson and colleagues on the city council. I'm really happy to be here. This is getting to be an opportunity I've had a couple of times now, so I really do appreciate it. I wanted to start by extending my congratulations to Mr. Ginder. Turns out that we began our public service exactly the same year. So, only I don't think I've got the pie crust done as well as he does, apparently. What I wanted to bring to you today is an opportunity for the city council to help the state of Minnesota bring some resources to our city in the form of the East Phillips Indoor Urban Farm. And there's a document that I think you all have before you. I was invited by the Commissioner of Agriculture to submit to him a proposal to create, to have state dollars be offered by the governor in a supplemental budget for creating some urban agriculture opportunities in the city of Minneapolis and elsewhere. And he has four sites in mind. One of them is the Project Sweetie Pie opportunity in northeast Minneapolis. I believe it's in Councilmember Johnson's ward, and it serves the north side of Minneapolis. The purpose of it is to really serve the north side of Minneapolis, North High School and others, very much in the issue of food justice and those opportunities for people to get access to good urban farming opportunities. The other one is this East Phillips Indoor Urban Farm that you see before you on this document, and I'm going to just talk about it very briefly. Third one is at Metro State on the east side in St. Paul. And I'm not sure where the fourth one is, but each of these have to do with looking at urban agriculture that serves communities of color, low-income communities, where the issue of food justice is really important. So I wanted to just share this with you today because there's going to be a motion later, I believe it's number eight on the agenda, for the acquisition and redevelopment of the Roof Depot site. And what this is, is an offer to help bring some state dollars at the invitation of the governor's administration to the city of Minneapolis for that purpose and also for the northeast and north Minneapolis area. I know that you care about those things, so I want to just briefly say this is a compromise at this point. We are realizing that you're going to be voting on the number eight agenda later that has to do with the Roof Depot, and Councilmember Kano, I know, has some language and emotion that she's bringing forward. This is in support of that because if you can pass that today, this gives me more leverage to take back to the governor and say, yes, we want that $3 million that we're asking for from the state of Minnesota for that site, and it's about $3 million for the Project Sweetie Pie in the north and northeast Minneapolis as well. So if you just look at this document, you'll see that there's a number of neighborhood organizations that have been very involved in this, in Phillips, East Phillips, Little Earth of United Tribes, Tamalise, Ibis, Ticoletas, East Phillips Improvement Coalition, the Women's Environmental Institute, and Growing Power from Milwaukee has been involved with us in looking at this. Growing Power Incorporated, some of you may know of Will Allen and his work. It's a national and international figure in helping develop urban agriculture. But what's new that I can show you here in the document today is also private enterprise collaborators that will help add, what we ever told, approximately another $7 million to this $3 million, bringing about a $10 million investment to that site. Those private collaborators include Dean DeVolos of DGR Architecture, the GoHo Hotel of Minnesota Sustainable Development Group, the turquoise river, which is an organization with the Mandan, Idatza, Irohara, excuse me, tribal nations who have federal Section 8A status and can bring federal dollars, plus the University of Minnesota Center for Science, Technology, and Environmental Policy at the Humphrey School. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention today and say that this motion that's coming before you is an opportunity, and it's an opportunity that will help me bring home to Minneapolis. $3 million for the south side, $3 million for the north side, and I just hope that you will help do that. And I think if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer, but these are all for structural planning, renovation of existing facilities in both examples. And the point is to work on this issue of environmental and food justice, and it's something that I hope that, you know, we can be team members working together on this. We know that it'll be a place where living, where jobs can be created, and culturally specific and entrepreneurial opportunities, businesses, small businesses can work, and they'll be bringing forward, you know, using traditional cultural agricultural skills and opportunities. So, Madam President, if there's any questions you have for me, I'd be glad to answer, but my request is that you positively consider that motion, and it means a lot to us. And I'm going to be fighting for you all, us all, over at the Capitol for this money.
Thank you, Representative Clark, and we appreciate your advocacy on this behalf of the city of Minneapolis for so many years, for what, 35 years, right?
Yes, that's right.
Mr. Ginder, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Representative Clark? Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate your input and glad you could join us. We have a resolution honoring the historic relationships among the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Naua, and other indigenous nations, and recognizing the Mexican, New York. And you're going to have to help me, Councilmember Kano.
Mm-hmm.
Naua.
Tekpah.
Tekpah. Tekpah Day in Minneapolis. So I'm going to turn this over to the expert, Councilmember Kano.
Thank you. If we can have our community speakers and our elders and our guests today, please join us at the front of the room. We can have you, is there young people that can join us up front, please? Is there any youth? Traditionally, we would start this by having me begin the speech, but we're going to actually start this in the ancestral way, where we're going to have the original inhabitants of Minnesota. Let us open up this conversation. So our Dakota elders are going to start.
Yeah, those are the microphone.
Omitakuyapi, was ichantewashtea napetchiusapido. In the language of the first Minnesotans, the Dakota people, that's a greeting when translated means hello, my relatives. With a good heart, I greet all of you with a handshake. And I also too, as a Dakota person, would like to welcome you to what was duck once? All Dakota land until, and the white, I think the first recorded encounter that I knew about occurred around 1640 with two guys named, one was Radisson, I think the other guy was, I forgot his name already. So anyway, and besides, even if I saw it, I can't pronounce it. Anyway, it was a French name. But these two people, as far as I know, were the first, and then in just in, you know, 200-plus years, well, they had no land when they came, but then in 200-plus years, now they have all the land, and we are left with maybe 1,500, 1,600 acres of the vast, of the 54 million acres that comprise the present-day state of Minnesota. But anyway, I welcome you to Dakota land, even though we're not militarily, economically, politically in control of this land, that those of us who follow the ancient ways, the ceremonies of our people will always feel, as long as any of us are alive, that we are still the spiritual owners of this land. I want to say thank you to the Minneapolis City Council for sponsoring this resolution, the Mashika New Year 2016. Also, that I want to thank the Minneapolis City Council for passing a resolution that I wrote back in the year 2012, the 150th anniversary of the Dakota-US War of 1862. And that resolution included words like genocide, bounties, concentration camps, mass executions, forced marches, et cetera. And as far as I know, this is the only, in my limited experience, this is the only white man's official document at any level of government, state or federal or municipal or county that contains such words like that. And so even though it was probably not a little step, baby step in the right direction, from my point of view, it was historic, and I use it to say Minneapolis City Council did this. And so that opened the way, and hopefully it will make progress down the road, and hopefully some of this will be taught in the schools, both public and private, here in the state of Minnesota. And so again, and I thank the Minneapolis City Council for passing or considering or passing this resolution concerning the Mashika New Year. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to, oh, yes, and I want to thank particularly Councilwoman Alondra Kano for her including me in this, because one of the things that when people think of native peoples, indigenous peoples, American Indians, whatever they call us, that we're usually overlooked, we're not mentioned, because there's only 2,400 of us now in the four Dakota communities. And like the Anishinaabe, they are about 45,000, and even some of the local or recent immigration groups that have, immigrant groups that have come to Minnesota, they number more than us. So I was really pleased that I was asked to participate in this event, and I think it was very proper and appropriate as well that a representative of the Dakota Oyate, the Dakota people or nation participate. So I thank you, and I'll turn it back to Councilwoman Kano.
Now, we're going to have some words from another traditional community here in Minnesota, Tony Stillby from the Red Lake Nation.
Thank you, Alondra, for inviting me. Bonjour. Oh, awesome. Thank you, Chris, for your words. Chris is very eloquent, and I just want to share with you a little bit of our history as an Anishinaabe woman. I feel it's my role to really step up to the plate and bring some leadership to healing, and I think part of that role is in partnership with our indigenous people. And I'm just so appreciative to be included in this and being part of a collective of people that are moving forward and looking at ways to heal our nations and do that in partnership and really become strong and put a face on the people who aren't able to speak and really be able to... and really be able to walk forward in a good way. And that's what I'm really, the message I'm here to share. So I'm so happy to see all of you, and I hope that you consider coming to the festivities in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
So I wanted to mention a couple of things. It wasn't until I came to Minneapolis in nineteen ninety-nine that I became really aware of the strong indigenous roots of this state. And I feel really blessed to have been able to attend the University of Minnesota as a first-generation college student, where I learned a lot about where the names of our lakes and our rivers and our streets come from, about the strong legacy and history and the resilience of that community that has withstood many, many violent acts and acts of oppression. And as a young woman, that helped me to really understand a little bit more about myself and where I came from. And Mexico is a very rich country in indigenous roots as well. There's many, many indigenous languages. They're not dialects, they're languages of their own. They have nations of their own as well. Where I'm from, in Chihuahua, the indigenous community there is the Rar á muri community, more traditionally known as the Par á omara, that are well-known for running long distances. And then my children, subsequently, I chose indigenous names, Mexican indigenous names for all three of my children that no one can ever spell or pronounce, right? But that's okay, we're going to continue to move forward with our daily struggles. And I'm just so happy and honored to be here on the council representing the largest American Indian urban population and now my Mexica family and community. So with that, I will read this resolution, and then we will have some of our organizers and community members who are part of this Mexica New Year address the crowd as well. So this is a resolution of the mayor and city council honoring the historic relationships among the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations and recognizing the Mexica New Year, Nawi Tekpah Day in Minneapolis. Whereas in twenty twelve, the city of Minneapolis declared the year of the Dakota, and in twenty thirteen began recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day to address the racial inequities in our city, thereby demonstrating that government entities and other institutions can change their policies and practices to acknowledge, respect, and honor indigenous people. Whereas, the city of Minneapolis recognizes that the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations are the original inhabitants of this continent. Whereas, the international borders imposed by colonial rule have severely hindered and disrupted the political, economic, scientific, artistic, and cultural collaborations between northern and southern indigenous nations. And whereas, the city of Minneapolis acknowledges the importance of restoring and promoting the ancestral connections among indigenous nations which predate statehood. Whereas, the Dakota, Anishinaabe, Nawa, and other indigenous nations enhance our great city through their political, cultural, and scientific knowledge, such as timekeeping measurements and records. Whereas, the Nawa people and related indigenous communities have kept their own records of time for thousands of years, and the Mexica created the Tonal Machiot, a timekeeping structure commonly referred to as the sunstone, that documents the bioenergetic alignment of the cycles of the sun, moon, Venus, and earth. Whereas, in this Gregorian year twenty sixteen, the indigenous Mexican peoples, also known as the Mexica, will end the year Yay Akat and begin the year Nawi Tekpah with the new cycle occurring on March eleventh, twenty sixteen, at approximately six forty-five p.m. Whereas, the alliance of the traditional Mexica groups Kalpuli Yavse Nochtli, Mexica Yolot, Witzilin, Santa Ursula de Coapa, Cuautemoc, and the broader indigenous community in Minneapolis will gather and celebrate the New Year of Nawi Tekpah in a public and family-focused celebration from March eleventh through the thirteenth, twenty sixteen, at the Minneapolis American Indian Center hosted by indigenous roots. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Minneapolis that March eleventh, twenty sixteen, is recognized as Mexica New Year in the city of Minneapolis. Be it further resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Minneapolis recognize and celebrate the richness and diversity of the indigenous Mexican community and urge the community to join the celebration of Mexica New Year at the Minneapolis American Indian Center.
Well, how are we doing? I'm really excited. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm sorry, sort of, you're used to that, so. I'm from Minneapolis. We have our Kalpuli Mexica Yolot, which means Mexican heart. We are in the community, and we're participating with this indigenous movement, which I strongly believe that is very important for us to be encouraging our youth, encouraging new generations to not lose roots, you know, to not lose their background, because that's an identity that has been damaged and lost throughout the years. So I really thank all the people who have been working so hard year after year, our community, our youth, our children, who are participating as well and being part of this great community of ours, which we are, and we're pretty much all over. But our group here is in Minneapolis. I'm from Mexico, I'm from Guadalajara, so my ancestors are with Choles, and I'm very proud of that. Thank you.
I would like to thank Councilmember Kano for her initiative and for supporting this resolution. I also want to thank the Minneapolis, all Minneapolis council members for their continued support the last four years in passing these proclamations and resolutions. We in the Latino Mexica community are extremely happy. We are indigenous people, we are descendants of the first peoples of this continent, so we are extremely happy to have this resolution and extremely happy that the city of Minneapolis is recognizing all indigenous peoples and recognizing their celebrations and their ceremonies. So thank you. We also want to thank the other groups, the other leaders, community leaders, Benjamin from Coapa, and also Monica from Witzilin, who, you know, we all work in solidarity, we all work in unity, how it should be in our communities, in our indigenous communities, and how it should be in the communities of color and all of the communities, period. So we work in unity, and we come together in a big effort to be part of this celebration for the greater community. We bring together so that people have understanding of the cultures, in particular the Mexica and other indigenous nations, so that they come to this weekend-long celebration and have a little more understanding of also the people who live here. I think that's very important to have in the city of Minneapolis as well as Minnesota as a whole. How can we, how do we work to put our differences aside regardless of what country we came from, regardless of the color of our skin, to come together and actually move forward as a community to make things happen, to make positive things happen, and to make changes in our community? So again, thank you, thank you all who are here present, supporting the Mexica New Year and supporting this resolution. Thank you very much.
to order. Quick call roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
Worsoni.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Almasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Here.
Reich.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
Glidden.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are thirteen members present.
We have all members present this morning, so we have a quorum, obviously. Next item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda, and there's a couple motions, a motion by myself to amend the order. I amend the agenda to include the order, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution recognizing April twenty sixteen as Parkinson's Disease Month. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Kano to amend the agenda to include, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution recognizing March eleventh, twenty sixteen, as Mexica New Year. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. With that, a motion to adopt the agendas in order.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of February twelfth, twenty sixteen.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Next, we have referral petitions, communications, and reports of the city officers to the proper committees and departments.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. The reports of the standing committees are next, and the first one to report is Community Development and Regulatory Services, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. The Community Development and Regulatory Services Committee is bringing forward eleven items for approval this morning. Items one through four are land sales. Item five is elimination of the Housing Board of Appeals membership and creation of an administrative review process. Item six are the regular license business and gambling applications. Item seven is a license settlement conference recommendation. Item number eight is authorizing a submittal of a U.S. labor loan for the Tech Hire Partnership Grant. Item number nine is a restructuring of the Plaza Verde Loan. Item number ten is round five of Green Homes North. And item number eleven is allowing Jack Link's to apply for a Minnesota Investment Fund Loan. The city is required to sign off on loan applications to the state. With that, I'll move items one through eleven for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved items one through eleven on the community development report, all items. Any discussion on any of those items? Okay, just a sec here. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull item number nine out for discussion and make a motion to delay by a cycle.
Okay, why don't you do that? Councilmember Kano has pulled out item nine. Why don't you speak to that?
Thank you. So item number nine is about a project that's in the Ninth Ward, the Plaza Verde Loan Restructure. And we've been working a lot with city staff and the community members who have raised questions about the details of the actual project financing in terms of the stakeholders that were engaged and how they were engaged to get to this point. So I fully acknowledge that I was part of this conversation at the CDRS committee, the cycle that moved it forward to where we are today. And I got calls and emails from Ninth Ward residents on Wednesday and then early Thursday morning, asking more questions. So I feel like it would be important for us to support me and having more conversations with my community residents and Midtown Phillips Neighborhood Association, specifically who was a financing partner of this deal from day one. So this is a sensitive project in that it's had a lot of support from the city, it has a lot of different stakeholders who are part of building the vision for the future of this corridor and a significant building that has helped to establish the Latino identity of the corridor as well as the immigrant identity of the corridor. So what I'm asking today is a delay of one cycle on this particular project so that we can have more time to get the city staff together with the Midtown Phillips Neighborhood Association residents, the treasurer, the board chair, and go over the details of the questions that they're asking, make sure that we are finding common ground with our residents, who I am here, of course, to represent, that is who I work for. And I had the opportunity to talk to Rebecca Perel, our city staff member, who's been working diligently on this project, and she mentioned that delaying it by a cycle would not interfere with a closing date as it is set right now. Of course, if things change in the process of those two weeks, if we want to make any tweaks or anything like that, that would impact the closing date. But as of now, I would like to delay this by a cycle so that I can make sure that my constituents are well-connected to the details of this project, that I can stand up one hundred percent behind the city staff recommendations, which unfortunately, at this time, with the questions that were raised within the last twenty-four hours, I can't do. You know, I have other projects that I've been working on over the last two days. So it would be great if I could just get the council members to support me in delaying this by a cycle and helping me figure out how to make sure that we're meeting our residents' needs and our neighborhood association needs when it comes to being one of the major players in refinancing our community development projects.
Councilmember Glidden has seconded the motion. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd ask the council to not delay this loan restructure and the loan assumption. The loan is set to close at the end of March. We have a three-week cycle coming in front of us, not a two-week cycle as a result of the three weeks. If Councilmember Kano's constituents want a further briefing, they certainly can have that once we approve the loan assumption.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And again, I spoke to Rebecca Perel yesterday, and she confirmed with me that a delay of one cycle would not negatively impact the ultimate goal or outcome of what has already been said in motion. I would like to have the opportunity to meet with my residents and the staff to go over the details of the questions that they've been asking over email and ensure that we have the proper city staff at the table, such as anyone connected to the NRP program, the city attorney's office, and of course, CPED.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, I'd like to say that this loan restructuring, I'm really excited about because it, one, it gets a property filled, and, two, it's for both minorities as well as new American business owner. And as we try and build wealth in communities of color, I think this is an extraordinary means to that end. I guess my question was if, is if Councilmember Kano will yield, and of course, she does not need to, what are the questions that remain that are of concern specifically?
One specific...
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. One specific question is about the intent and the initial investment in supporting non-private partners. So looking at what is the role of the financing of the city and neighborhood associations, specifically when the loans switch hands from, in this case, what was a nonprofit developer, a community developer connected to a mission, vision-based work, and now moving forward to a, what you would consider a private individual. So I think these are questions that we need to have in terms of just being on the same page with our community about our intent and how we move this money forward in these projects. And again, it's really, you know, I don't necessarily think that, you know, I appreciate other council members' interest in my ward. I appreciate other council members' careful attention to the projects that are in my ward and to the questions that my residents are raising. And I would like to have time to meet with my residents specifically, to really get at the root questions that they're presenting on these issues. Like I said, these questions were raised within the last twenty-four hours, and I want to have, you know, do proper time to meet with my residents and the city staff to make sure that everybody's on the same page, which right now, we're not.
Has the deal changed from a nonprofit deal to a private deal since the CDRS meeting?
That's where things are, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. That's where things would be moving. The idea is that eventually NDC would step out of the financing of this operation and that it would go into the hands of a private individual.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a loan assumption issue. When you, when we, as the city, authorize loans from various sources, including NRP loans, we don't put into the loan documents what the moral obligation or intent is or is not. The intent was to revitalize this building that was sitting vacant over a long period of time. The intent was to forgive the loan in five-year chunks as long as the building remained one in which these immigrant businesses could be located. Nothing about this loan assumption has changed. Perhaps the kinds of immigrant businesses have changed, but other than that, there has been no change. I'll also note that there is no requirement that any NRP organization give permission for the loan assumption. Our requirement as the city is to make sure the building is used in a similar way. The refinancing done by Sunrise Bank and Lisk, which is also a nonprofit, guaranteed that the building will be used in a similar way, albeit there might be different immigrant businesses in the building. So our... So our, I have had an opportunity to speak with Ms. Perrell, as well as our city attorney, who were both in the community development meeting. This item was a discussion item. It wasn't a consent item. It was discussed. Lisk and Sunrise Bank were there. There is a good amount of support from city staff to move forward on this loan assumption, and I would urge us to do it today.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. Well, this is a little bit confusing for me. I'm not on the committee, and I haven't been tracking this very much. And sitting here, listening to kind of the division, I'm trying to see if there's some middle ground that we could get to somehow. It does occur to me that even if we approved this, it doesn't close till the end of March, and there still might be lots of opportunity for discussions and dialogue. I did also check in briefly with staff on it, and it seems as though a delay, if there were no changes, would, things could just move along smoothly. So the issue is whether or not there'd be any changes. I do notice on the report, too, that the NRP funds aren't going to be recovered to any level, or they're forgivable in 2019. So there's also until 2019, something might be able to be figured out. So I could see me being comfortable delaying it or moving forward with it. So I'm still stuck having to make my own decision. So if anybody wants to weigh in on that, but it does seem like there could be chances for some dialogue. And I guess my question would be, what if there were some, what if we approved it? And what if there were some deeper discussions about it, and there was some understanding that NRP funds could be recovered and repaid somehow sooner? Would then we have to come back to the council with any of those changes? And would there be time to do that even before March, before the closing date? And nobody has an answer to that, that's fine.
Councilmember Goodman.
Madam Chair, there is no opportunity for NRP funds to be recovered. That's the point. These are, this was a forgivable loan over a 15-year period, and each of the first five years of this period, the use was exactly the same, and the loan was forgiven. Now we're two years into the next five-year period. There is a loan assumption process going on, and they will be required under the conditions of the city's loan that's still in the project for almost $300,000. And this NRP loan till 2019, that they also have to keep the building in the same use as they have had it in the past. So there isn't going to be any NRP money to recover. In 2019, the last portion of the loan will be recovered. I can guarantee you, the purpose of this motion, and I bet there'll be another motion next, would be to say, let the NRP people have their money back. There isn't any reason to allow the money to go back. The use is exactly the same. So there is no reason to delay. There's plenty of time between now and the loan closing to discuss with the neighborhood that the building use will be the same, because we have to make that guarantee. We also have a loan in the deal for over $300,000.
Madam President?
Who is?
I, I'm not sure if I still have the floor. So that's the part I think that there seems to be confusion about, because it's a forgivable loan. And usually, when someone has a forgivable loan, there's some stipulations that it gets forgiven, or it might not be forgiven if you don't follow those stipulations. And so that's, I don't have the documents from NRP. I don't know what those, what the requirements were. I think that, I'm trying, I trust that, I trust my colleagues here, probably know better than I, but it seems like my colleagues are divided on it a little bit. But, so that was, my issue was, that would give them time to all come to agreement and say, oh, look, we've reviewed the documents, and this forgivable loan will still be forgiven. There's no terms that are violated by this transaction or not. But I'm still stuck, but I appreciate the discussion to help me sort things out.
Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President. I had the fortunate accident of meeting Kate Speed from Lisk last week when I was in an affordable housing trip to Phoenix, Arizona, with Clues. And her and I had the opportunity to talk about the Plaza Verde project quite a bit and have been in touch over the weekend and in the days leading up to this discussion. So I'm happy to say that my office has been working with them on trying to figure out how to address some of the concerns that have raised, have been raised since Wednesday afternoon and then Thursday morning, and continued email chains throughout Thursday and Friday morning. So I believe that they have some ideas that I would like to be able to listen to and to engage with. I also know that Heart of the Beast is another player and another partner here who is very important to this cultural and economic corridor for Eastlake Street, one that has been struggling for a long time. So as a councilmember of the area, I respectfully ask for my colleagues' support in letting me handle this, in letting me work with my constituents to address the issues that are being raised. Delaying this by a cycle is not going to impact the ultimate closing date, as Rebecca Perrell has stated with me over the phone. Again, I need the time to be able to pull the right people together in a room so we can all be on the same page, and these questions can be answered, which, today, I cannot stand behind 100% this decision that's coming forward before us, given the questions have been raised Wednesday, Thursday, leading up until today. So I just respectfully ask that my colleagues support me in doing the work that I have been elected to do. It's not going to impact anything negatively for Councilmember Goodman's ward. It's not going to impact anything negatively for Councilmember Jacob Frye's ward. This is something that falls in the Ninth Ward, where I have been elected to work with my community residents, who have reached out to me, asking me for questions and help in resolving this issue. That's what I'm asking for today, a delay.
Councilmember Worsami.
Thank you, Madam President. In terms of this issue, what I'm, what I'm quite worried about is that this went through the normal channels that we go through. The staff, who have worked on this for a while, have recommended this loan restructuring to pass. They've brought it to CD. It was unanimously approved in CD, and I believe Councilmember Kano was a member of, is a member of CD, and if I'm not mistaken, actually spoke in favor of it. It passed Cal on Wednesday. Today, we are at the final stage. You have an immigrant person of color businessman who's investing a great deal of money into this building. And what we are saying is, you know, we should just, you're a special kind of investor. Therefore, we're gonna change the procedure that the council has, you know, 24 hours, or 20 hours, or an hour before the final decision. If there were concerns from the community, if there were concerns from the neighborhood, these should have been aired at the committee. It should have been aired at Cal. And this is, I haven't seen this type of delay or this type of tactic. And I am not sure, and it's also, and I don't want to answer to or say anything more, but it's evident that some of the talk and some of the soundbites that I saw on social media and on the general media was to say that this type of investor is not welcome in this building, which I find very unfortunate, you know, in this day and age, because this individual who is taking a risk, who is moving from Washington State to come here, wants to rehabilitate this building, and has even said on the record that he's willing to work with the people who have leases and the tenants who are in the building. So I'm not sure, you know, why we're going through this, but I would urge my colleagues to pass this item. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree that it's unfortunate a little, I think, that we're getting so into the details of this at council instead of at the committee, where we generally do allow for more time and staff presentation so that councilmembers can make more informed decisions. So for those of us who are not on the committee, we're just all kind of trying to catch up. As I spoke with councilmembers yesterday, my understanding was that this, the real question here is the forgivable loan that was given out by the neighborhood organization. You know, this is something that I think at committee, everyone was speaking about as a great success, because this is what the loans were supposed to do. They, we were subsidizing a building with both neighborhood funding and city taxpayer dollars. It wasn't penciling, right? We had to subsidize it. But now we have a private investor that has come in and is investing private dollars to create jobs and to create space for people to use in that building. So that's a success. It means the loans worked. So now we have this detail left of what happens with a forgivable loan. One thing I struggle with a bit is what is the role for the city in that? Because the loan isn't with the city. It's between the neighborhood organization and NDC, and NDC is the entity that would need to pay back the loan. So anyway, at the end of the day, I think these details, again, really should have been worked out. I understand the request for more time, but it seems like there has been a lot of time and discussion and outreach to the neighborhood organization. And I don't even know what the city could do. Perhaps the city could put in funds into the deal in order to allow for NDC to pay back the loan. I don't know that we could force NDC to pay back the loan. That's not usually a role that the city plays in individual contracts between a nonprofit organization and another nonprofit organization. So I don't know if the chair has details about those kind of more technical or legal issues to provide. But anyway, with my understanding of where we are at and the role that the city would play in this loan negotiation, I don't see any reason to delay and to, I don't know what outcome there would be that can't be achieved again, as Councilmember Gordon said, with just more kind of time to discuss these details with the entities that are really responsible legally for this loan agreement.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Kano's motion to delay one cycle? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Opposed, nay. The nays have it, that motion fails. So back to community develop, back to the community development agenda, as moved by Councilmember Goodman, all items, one through eleven. Any further discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Almasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Nay.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes and one nay.
That report is approved. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement, and that committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing 10 items forward for consideration today. The first is the Marijuana Decriminalization Ordinance that would remove marijuana from the list of prohibited drugs in our health code. The second is confirming the marijuana reappointment of Harvey Hoffman to the Minneapolis Advisory Committee on People with Disabilities. The third item is East Harriet Farmstead's Neighborhood Decriminalization Program Plan Modification. Fourth is the Hawthorne Neighborhood Priority Plan for Community Health Dialogues. Approving that. And the fifth item is authorizing a DAB-USE Agreement with Minnesota Hospital Association. The sixth item is authorizing an amendment to our contract with Electronic Health Record Systems to support our school-based clinics in our high schools. Seventh item is authorizing an amendment to our contract with Stairstep Foundation, increasing the contract for National Diabetes Prevention Program classes. The eighth item is authorizing another amendment to a contract, and this one's with Wetland Habitat Restorations. It's increasing the contract by $31,600 for community engagement in a demonstration pilot project in the North Side Greenway. The ninth item is authorizing agreements with Tree Trust and Wetland Habitat Restorations to provide tree planting and community outreach services for our urban forestry program. And the final item, probably the most significant item, is authorizing execution of 23 solar community garden subscription agreements with four suppliers for a term of 25 years. And this will be the first time that the city becomes a subscriber in a solar community garden. And I'm happy to take questions, but I will be moving all of those items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the, excuse me, Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or speak on any of those items? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to speak just briefly on item number one, which is the Marijuana Decriminalization Ordinance. Right now, at the state level, we have a statute saying that minor marijuana possession is a petty misdemeanor, while at the city level, we have an ordinance classifying it as a misdemeanor, which, of course, is a crime. And while the vast majority of the time, we do charge under the state statute, which is a lesser offense, there are instances in which we have charged under the city ordinance. And it's problematic for multiple reasons. One, because it's a crime. Two, because it's a permanent dark mark on your record that could detract from your ability to get a job. And three, I believe that crimes and serious charges should be reserved for matters that are seriously injurious to society. And possessing a joint just quite simply does not rise to that level. Additionally, we know that black and white populations admit to smoking pot at practically the same rates. However, communities of color, and specifically, black men, are charged at rates five to 10 times higher than that of whites. So the enforcement is clearly taking place in a discriminatory fashion. And, you know, at the end of the day, this, while this action in and of itself is, will not have a major impact, because we usually charge under the state statute, it's an important first step towards decriminalization. So I would appreciate my colleagues' support on it.
Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to be short on this, and thank Councilmember Frye and Councilmember Andrew Johnson for putting this forward. You know, I think the one thing that caught my attention was looking at the RSCA and seeing the city attorney saying that the change in ordinance will be of minimal or no impact, because the Minneapolis Police uses the state statute when dealing with small amounts of marijuana possession cases. And so I'm gonna vote for this.
Further discussion? Seeing none, clerk call the roll on the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Almasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items today, and it may get a little bit complicated, but I will just read the three items, and then I will have two motions before me. The first item is a contract with the U of M for MPD to provide bomb detection services to TCF Stadium. The second is a contract with the U of M Police Department, with the U of M Police Department to provide extra security and tactical response at TCF Stadium. The third item is a contract with TASER International for purchase of body-worn camera equipment and video storage solution, and the contract amount is about almost $4 million. And I'd like to pull item number two and number three off for discussion.
Okay. Councilmember Yang has moved the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Item one, item two, and item three have been pulled off for discussion. Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. For item number two, we got a note from the MPD that in this situation, they wanted to delete this item from the agenda. And the reasoning was that with regards to this revenue contract, the University of Minnesota has asked that this contract be on two different contracts to facilitate their internal processes, as it is being charged to different departments. And so I'd like to move that item number two be deleted from this agenda.
Councilmember Yang has moved to delete item two from the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report. Every part, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. On item three, then, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam President. I believe in public safety, we had a staff direction, and then in Ways and Means, we also had a staff direction. And it might have gotten confusing as to just certain things that were in both staff directions. And so the city clerk had recommended that we put forth a motion that really consolidates both those motions for clarity's sake. And so you have before you the motion, and this is moving for approval of the following directions to staff related to the issue of body-worn camera equipments. So in essence, both those staff directions were passed in committee, but we're consolidating both of them to make them clear for us. And so I don't know if you want me to read the whole thing, but for the most part, I think it's pretty clear. You know, we've worked really hard with the three co-authors, also Council Vice Presidents Glidden and other councilmembers to get this as perfect as possible, just so that we have something that everyone can be happy with. So I'd like to move that we approve this motion.
Councilmember Yang has moved item three on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, which has a staff direction, which is in front of you, entitled Body-Worn Camera Equipment. It's a motion by Councilmember Yang, Councilmember Gordon, Councilmember Almasano. Councilmember Gordon. On Councilmember Yang's motion- On Councilmember Yang's motion, the staff direction.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I support this and appreciate the work that went into it. I was at the committee, the person who made the motion in public safety about this. This is when we were approving a contract that would involve the expenditure of some $4 million on body cameras, and there was some concern about that we don't have a policy set already, even though we certainly have approved funding and moving forward with cameras many times, and we've looked at a draft of a policy from our police oversight commission, and we also have seen some other, and we know the police are working on it. And one of the things I wanted to make sure is that there was a community engagement process, so we've asked them to come back at our next meeting on March 2nd to present a plan to engage the community in developing the proposed policy for body worn cameras. That's the first one, and that's definitely reflected in here. The third one was also part of that motion. It's indicating when we expect the policy to come back, April 6th, and it'll be presented presumably after getting some community engagement and feedback between March 2nd and April 6th. We'll come back to the committee to be reviewed until we get that. We've also asked for the city clerk to help develop procedures in governing the creation, accessibility, management, and disposition of the body worn camera data. I think these, and I appreciate all the staff directions, I won't read through them all, but there's five items on here, and I think that this will help us make sure we're taking advantage of this new technology the best way that we can.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to my colleagues, Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Yang, in being especially concerned about the policy of how we take this on and how, what the policies and procedures are for police officers as they wear body worn cameras. That is the first part of this combined motion. I want to just summarize the rest of them that are in front of you, that's items two, three, four, and five. This is about developing information and resources to help aid the public in accessing body camera footage. There's a lot of upfront education when somebody comes in with a desire to see an incident that they or a loved one may have been involved in, and I think that a little bit, we know that a little bit of upfront education about how to best request that can both help with being really responsive to that request and not giving so much information back and creating so much work that that person, the requester, doesn't actually need. The next part is really about developing procedures about the creation and the management of data, of all of the data, of all of the terabytes that we will eventually have up in the cloud about body camera footage. This is about working with the police department and the clerk's office to develop that infrastructure. The fourth part is really about reporting back progress and how we're doing with that. I know that we all have an interest in making sure that this goes smoothly. And the last part is really about staff developing a budget recommendation for these ongoing costs. You know, one thing that strikes me is that we haven't really done a feasibility study. We've gone and we've benchmarked over other cities around the country that are doing this right now, and we know that it's going to be a lot, but to really do what in private industry is called more of a feasibility study of sorts. Separately, in next cycle, I will work with Councilmember Gordon and Councilmember Yang to bring forward a motion that directs leadership to develop an action plan that will clear out what has become a chronic backlog in our records information unit. This unit is often about needs like serving the public with accident reports, expungement processing, things needed by the public for their insurance processing, weekend judicial review. These things stand squarely in our way of beginning a body camera program that's responsive to the public. I know we are all committed to making the city and our police department an open, transparent, and accountable organization. I believe body cameras can help us toward that goal. We've taken actions on that from a budget standpoint the past two years, but we cannot achieve that goal if we don't commit enough resources that allow us to be responsive to requests from the public or even for internal review. We know this from other jurisdictions, we know this from a review by our audit department, and we know this from statistics from the police department, that achieving transparency with body cameras is going to be a labor-intensive task. So to that end, I want to make sure that our significant investment in body cameras, including the $4 million we are allocating today, will be a success. I think that we can do that with this motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. Just since we had so much discussion about this, both at Ways and Means and Cow, I wanted to mention that I'm really appreciative to the authors for incorporating the language that passed through Ways and Means regarding how we handle staffing and budgeting. I think leading with the policy expectations and then taking a more holistic approach to any staffing needs that might come, again, through our budgeting process is the right approach, and I'm really appreciative of all the work that's going into setting those policy expectations around this new program.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm also appreciative of the authors for bringing this motion forward. I think it also calls into question how we are going to function and interact with our audit committee and department. We instituted an audit committee, we hired an auditor, that auditor then goes and conducts audits, and in this case, the audit revealed of, among many different things, that we were falling dramatically in about 180 hours per week behind in terms of our public transparency and data practices. So, you know, I think that's a staggering statistic, it's one that we should be concerned about, clearly we are, and it's one that needs action quite soon. So I'm glad to see this moving forward, and I just don't want to see us institute a wonderful policy with body cameras that is, under anybody's account, very necessary, and then not follow through to its entirety.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Frye, okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none on the staff direction, all in approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Then on the Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Report, number one and number three with staff direction, any further discussion on either of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee is forwarding six items for approval today. Item one is a legal settlement with Burlington Northern Santa Fe Track Expansion at Seventh Street Northeast. Item two is a request for proposal for graffiti abatement services, and that's authorized issuance of an RFP for abatement of services that cannot be successfully abated by the Division of Solid Waste, which does the primary work for that activity. Item three is the Minneapolis Open Streets 2016, approving routes and management service agreement. Very exciting set of activity that we look forward to this year, and also continuing our partnership with the Bike Civil Coalition. And item four is the Southwest Light Rail Transit Station Names, and authorizing a submittal letter to the Metropolitan Council regarding the city's recommendations for Southwest Light Rail Transit Station Names, and I think that will very clearly clarify our city position on that matter and the community's position. The following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Item five is the Ninth Street South Kenny Residential Street Resurfacing Project, and those are the actions needed to proceed. And item six is a bid for large diameter sanitary sewer cleaning, and that's accepting the low bid from Sewer Services Incorporated for the amount listed. I'll stand for questions, but move approval of all items.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation and Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick comment on item number four.
Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd want to thank members of the Transportation and Public Works Committee for this strong letter of support for the names for Southwest LRT. I want to note that this came as a result of Councilmember, Councilmember Yang's comment that he felt that the Van White Station really ought to be reserved for a station that serves North Minneapolis better than the Southwest LRT Station does. And I will note that the Met Council has approved, through their committee process so far, renaming Van White Basset Creek Valley Station, which was the request of the joint committee and the city, and has reserved the names of Van White Station as well as Penn Station for the Botno Line. So we're moving forward, I do want to take this action today, but I do want to note we're being heard by the Met Council, at least the committees that we've been through so far.
Any further discussion on the Transportation and Public Works Report? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Glidden.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Ways and Means Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means will bring forward 16 items for your consideration today. First is a land sale. Item number two is a settlement for a workers' compensation claim. Item number three is a downtown improvement district grant and amended agreement. Item number four is a legal services agreement with Rice, Michaels, and Walther LLP. Item number five is a contract amendment with Restorative Justice Community Action. Item number six is a contract closeout with Premier Electrical Corporation for RGB LED lighting in exhibit halls at the convention center. Item number seven is an agreement extension between Hennepin County and the city regarding the Office to End Homelessness. Item number eight is the acquisition and redevelopment of the Roof Depot properties for municipal operations purposes. There are four associated actions with that, includes the acquisition of the real estate of the property itself for municipal operations. The second is directing staff to redevelop the Roof Depot site following LEED standards for gold level. Item number, portion three of that action is authorizing the issuance of an RFP for architectural and engineering services, and the final action area for this item is authorizing the issuance of an RFP for LED commissioning services. The ninth item for your consideration is a bond issuance for Target Center renovation project. Item number 10 is a contract amendment with DRI Consulting for Management Assessment Services. Item 11 is the IT gift acceptance for March 2016 SharePoint Fest Technology Conference. Item number 12 is a contract with Aramosa for Public Works Laboratory and Operations Data System Software. 13 is issuance of an RFP for Citation Issuance and Management System. Item 14 is a contract amendment with EMA for Maximo Asset Management Software. Item 15 is IT contracts with Erite, Cloud Sherpas, and Integra Rhythm for Service Now Application Expansion. And the final item is a contract extension for the mayor's office interim communications director. I'd like to move all 16 items.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Anyone want to pull anything off or discuss any of those items? Councilmember Kano?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to pull item number eight, the acquisition and redevelopment of the Roof Depot properties for discussion, and then I have a motion. Did you guys hand out my motion? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Kano has asked to pull off item eight. Councilmember Kano.
Thank you, Madam President, and I see that the motion is being handed out. I was able to forward it electronically to a couple of people this morning, but apologize, I didn't get around to sending it to everyone. I was preparing for this beautiful resolution we had this morning that I thank everyone for supporting. So this, this motion is a staff direction, and I'll just read it very quickly. It's to direct the staff work team consisting of property services, public works, and community planning and economic development to work with East Phillips residents and community members to identify redevelopment or leasing scenarios for the portion of 1860 28th Street East and 2717 Longfellow Avenue, not required for the water maintenance distribution program needs or public works functions. So what's been happening here is that, as you recall, my residents in this area and a lot of the environmental and sustainability community members and organizers have been working on finding ways to help the Phillips community turn around in terms of really addressing the cumulative impacts of the environmental pollution that has been concentrated in this portion of the city for decades. And we have the blessing of being able to work with a lot of our elected officials, such as State Representative Karen Clark, who is still here with us today. Thank you for your time. Your time is valuable, I appreciate you being here. We have also seen a letter earlier this week emailed out or distributed to councilmembers, co-authored by State Representative Karen Clark, State Representative Susan Allen, and State Senator Jeff Hayden. So all of these partners, both our multi-jurisdictional partners over here at the, at the state, ourselves, my office, the Neighborhood Association, a variety of community-based groups, including Little Earth, Temales y Bicicletas, and some of the other environmental justice groups that care about these issues, have really put attention to this future redevelopment site and project, not only because of its transit-oriented development potential, its connection to the Greenway, which as we know, you know, in Uptown, the Greenway has gathered a lot of interest in development, and redevelopment is happening there consistently, and we'd like to see some of that happen also in East Phillips, which happens to be a racially concentrated area of poverty. And so for, for me, this motion is really about ensuring that the city staff, who are already detailed to be a part of the development of the Roof Depot properties, as noted in item number eight, continue to engage with our community to identify redevelopment scenarios that could create green jobs and sustainable future for this neighborhood, with the notion that we would focus on water maintenance distribution program needs and public works functions, resulting from a conversation that I had yesterday with Mr. Greg Goke, where those, those functions are being entertained. Of course, we know the water maintenance facility was one of them. Additionally, it sounds like they might want to do some other public works-related functions there, such as the concrete repair and parking ramp repair operations. And I think what we want to shy away from is continuing to further concentrate more municipal storage uses there that are considered dead uses for a TOD site, storage for elections materials, storage for police evidence units, that sort of thing. So the, the staff direction here before us is about focusing our efforts on helping the city meet its public works needs, as well as getting the community members to be at the table to identify redevelopment scenarios that would work for this very diverse low-income area of the city.
Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. In encouraging my colleagues to not approve this particular staff direction, I will point to how we came here today. We have already put in motion the primary purpose of this site with a previous vote, but we have before staff coming back based on that previous vote, completing this step of the project, or the process, rather. And in the meanwhile, they certainly have done a certain amount of, considerable amount of consideration in terms of continued community engagement and even looking and exploring at different ancillary uses for the site with community input. As a matter of fact, the RCA specifically calls out that continued engagement. Director Goke actually forwarded that clarification to Quincy and myself. Quincy, of course, being the Ways and Means Chair, and myself, Public Works Chair, which was the primary user and the primary purpose why we're putting forward public dollars, to not set up and guarantee certain private interests, but to make sure that there's a public purpose that's, that's maintained, sustained, and, and something that I think we've agreed as a full council is necessary for our total enterprise activities. And so by honoring the RCA before us, honoring the decisions before us, and by kind of maybe discounting this continued notion that the Public Works Water Division, or any of the Public Works activities, are somehow not anti-environment, anti-community, no, they're pro-environment, pro-community, and I think if we don't start realizing that or start honoring that sort of aspect of it, it's somewhat of a backhanded sort of discounting of the work they do. So I just wanted to make that part of it clear as well.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the consideration, especially from what Representative, excuse me, I'm looking right at you. Yeah, I just called go by Karen right now. Okay. Representative Clark brought forward today, it's a fascinating idea, and it comes with money, and ideas are what's needed. And I just wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Reich just mentioned. In the RCA, we do have that community engagement and redevelopment process outlined, and this is already a promise that we're ready to fulfill. And this is a public works project primarily, as municipal operations, but we also have, it's, it's an FSAM project, so this, this, we've initiated this by actually securing the property, we'll be able to go into the initial design phase, and that's where we do that project scoping. That's when we come up with what we want it to look like in the conceptual plans, and then come back from FSAM committee back to this council for another look at what's the best recommendation and what could be included. And I'm sure that at some point, the urban, or the indoor urban farm or other ideas that could come out of the process that meets with East Phillips neighborhood, developers, contractors, other tenants, would be all part of that process. So although I appreciate the sentiment of the So although I appreciate the sentiment of the staff direction, I think it's already captured in the RCA and in the action eight months ago, and in the commitment on behalf of the city to continue that work. So I, I look forward to the acquisition of the property in today's action, and then future actions with the Neighborhood Association led by our Property Services Department, including CPED. We'll, we'll bring that to fruition that we can have an actual response to consider.
Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, and I, I guess I differ from Councilmember Quincy a little bit. And my sense is if it's already called out in the RCA, and if this is consistent with the staff recommendation, what harm is a staff direction? Then clarifying it at the council meeting that we all also think this is important, and there should be this community engagement with these three city departments. Clearly, this is an issue that the community cares about a lot, and they want to make sure that they might have an opportunity to play a role in. This is actually, I think, the compromise that we maybe could have found out last time, because we, I know this is at least the second time we're kind of discussing this. And this is an opportunity, I think, to help build bridges with the community and help show what a great partner we are. And if it's already mentioned in the RCA, having a staff direction now clearly articulating that, we'll just add to that and strengthen that and show that we are responsive and we're willing to look with our partners and work with our partners in the community and also at the state legislature. So I'm supporting the staff direction.
Councilmember Kano?
Thank you. I was just clarifying. Was my motion seconded, or are we discussing and then seconding?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have asked for a second. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. It's been seconded.
Yeah.
Councilmember Kano?
No, thank you. I appreciate it. So I just wanted to address a couple of things. This isn't a project of community engagement. I clearly see that the RCA that was approved by Ways and Means has language about working with the community, open houses, and engaging with the residents of the area. And that's great, and I'm really glad, and I support that. And I've been working with staff on that. That's actually one of the ways that this language even made it here in the first place. So I, I don't think that my staff direction is about community engagement, Councilmember Quincy. The, the spirit of the staff direction before you is about the functions and trying to balance the functions of the public works facility with the, the needs of the community. And so this is where, again, we're trying to tailor this project to meet the needs of public works in the water maintenance facility and the community, and discourage the other additional municipal operations that would be considered dead uses for the area, such as storage, to get those out of the picture, just so that we can really focus on the primary need of public works, the water maintenance facility, which of course has been approved by the council. And, and so that's what this is about. And this would not replace anything in the RCA. This would be a part of the overall package, and it would move together to really focus and tailor the type of work that should be happening here. I also just want to say that by any means, I don't see myself as somebody who is here to punish any staff that has been working on this project. I find it problematic that anytime I try to participate and shape policy, I'm relegated to a position of, of being inadequate, or not constructive, or angry, or trying to create problems. What I'm doing here is really bringing the voice of my residents to the table. This is not an anti-public works project. This is a way to really ensure that the residents who pay our salaries, who pay for this building, who pay for this municipal facility, to be a part of the table and be a part of the conversation from beginning to end, because we are here to serve the residents, and they deserve a place at the table. So that's what the staff direction is here today. And I just want to make sure that people change their thinking in the ways that they hear my voice. I am not here to create problems. I am here to represent people who have been disenfranchised for centuries in this country, in this state, in the city. This is why the most low-income area, most diverse area of our city, also happens to be the most polluted. That is not by accident. That is by design. And I am here to say that design needs to stop, and this staff direction is moving us away from that and into a racial equity era. So I ask for your support.
Councilmember Reich? Councilmember Reich?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I think Councilmember Quincy put it well. This is in fact not a public works project. They are our primary user, as identified in, in previous actions and currently today before us. But it's an FSAM project. We have lots of municipal needs, and that's why it's stated as such. This is a municipal facility. We didn't go into this spending a lot of public dollars to do a development deal. That would have come through CPED. It did not come through CPED. However, they will be involved in looking at these alternative uses after the primary uses have been identified through analysis. Before us, we have a process of analysis. We're not going to predispose our hamstring FSAM from doing what they need to do and what they've been directed to do on behalf of the city with city dollars by a direction that, that circumscribes that. If there's agreement that there's a process in place in the original RCA for participation, then it's a redundancy that's not needed. However, circumscribing the end use before we've done the analysis and given the previous direction to have flexibility for FSAM city purposes would be a contradiction of how we got here in the first place. As a matter of fact, if we don't like the project, or what's being proposed, or having public works in the community, or it's going to be some grand polluter, then let's just reverse, let's just deny it. Let's just cut the deal right now, put it on the open market and see what happens. We don't want to do that. We've already made a decision to move forward, and I wish we'd continue to do that, consistent with where we came, where we started, and where we are today. And so I continue to urge people to not engage in this staff direction.
Any further discussion on Councilmember Kano's motion, staff direction? I'm just going to say that the challenge I have with this motion is exactly what Councilmember Reich is talking about, which is limiting the city's ability to choose how to use this facility. And I think to call our elections use, or our elections work dead, dead use, or police evidence dead use is really denigrating to those particular parts of the city enterprise that are very, very important to the operations of the city. So that's the challenge that I have with the staff direction. Any further discussion? Seeing none, on Councilmember motion, Councilmember Kano's motion for staff direction, all in approval, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Let's do a roll call.
Councilmember Yang?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Nay.
Worsani?
Nay.
Goodman?
No.
Fry?
Nay.
Palmasano?
Nay.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Nay.
Bender?
Aye.
Liddon?
Aye.
President Johnson?
No.
There are five ayes and eight nays.
That amendment does not prevail. Then on the item eight, we want a separate vote, I imagine. So let's, let's do the Ways and Means report pull off item eight. So on all items, Ways and Means except number eight, clerk will call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry. Further discussion? Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak to item number eight. I'll be, so did you want to?
I, I think we'll have the roll call on all items except item eight, and then people can speak to that if they want.
That sounds good.
All right. Councilmember Fry? No. Councilmember Kano?
Sir, Madam President, could you repeat what you said to Councilmember Andrew Johnson? I couldn't, I couldn't hear.
We are going to have the roll call on all items on Ways and Means, except item eight. We'll vote on item eight separately.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. So on the Ways and Means report, all items except item eight, so one through seven, nine through sixteen, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
No on item number nine, yes on all the others.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
No on number nine, aye on the rest.
Kano?
No on nine, aye on the rest.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Liddon?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report, except for number nine, which has 10 ayes and three nays.
Those items are adopted. On item eight, then. Councilmember Andrew Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I'll be voting on item number eight as a no. And I spoke about this at committee, you know, and I also spoke about this when originally this came up before the council. I do think that, you know, this is a community that has had historically racial injustices, and this is really displacing potential for the community to add value and do something amazing with it. And actually, I think you see that right here with this indoor urban farm. And I'm excited that Representative Clark has worked hard to secure millions of dollars for this space. You know, I'm working with developers along my light rail stations, 38th Street, 46th Street. It's going to add value to the community, and they tell me, light rail stations are the new lakefront. It's a great area. It's highly attractive. It gets people around. And the same thing's true of the Greenway as well, which this site happens to be off of. So I'm surprised that for a site that's literally on the Greenway, that is a couple blocks from a light rail station, that we are occupying it with space that's not going to be adding value to the community. But the reason why I voted at committee a no on item number eight was because I understand that we were going to use eminent domain for this property when the private landowners weren't willing to sell. We ultimately did not approve of that eminent domain process because, once it was threatened, they ultimately were willing to work with the city in order to sell the land. And I think that it was a heavy-handed tactic that I don't appreciate on a project where this location is absolutely nice to have. Certainly, there are operational efficiencies to be gained here. Certainly, it's convenient for city staff to be located in the center of the city. But there are alternative sites, and I believe we have to respect when both the community and the property owner and the representatives for the community don't want this to happen, that we, you know, look for other options when other options are available. So that's why I'm voting no today on item number eight, and I hope as many of my colleagues as possible can join me on it. And I also just want to say too, you know, our staff said this at committee, are great negotiators in general. They're, I don't fault them for using every tool available to them. And certainly, if I was in a private deal, I'd want the kind of talent that we have negotiating. And to Councilmember Reich's point, you know, I think we have tremendous public works staff and team and crew, and they are good neighbors at their facilities, and, and I appreciate all the work that they're out there doing. So I'm not trying to in any way knock public works, nor our property services staff. I think that they do tremendous work. I just don't think that this is the right move for this community. Wrong location, wrong time. Thank you.
Councilmember Fry?
Thank you, Madam President. And I, yeah, I will also be voting no on this item. I just wanted to give a brief explanation as to why. The, the present water yard is just maybe four or five blocks away from where I presently live. And I didn't know it was there, honestly, until I joined the city council and until this issue became readily apparent. And once I've been looking into the matter further, you know, our public works employees, they contribute greatly to the community. They patron many of the local businesses. You know, we love having them in the ward. That being said, there is an underlying need to transfer where the fire station presently exists and over to where the water yard is, over on 5th Avenue in Hennepin. But, you know, and I'm also listening to the community as well. And while it, it doesn't seem like the financing is presently there, having the possibility down the road of regaining $3 million and putting into the, into the structure, I think, I think would be a wonderful thing in combination with the, the public works facility.
Councilmember Kano?
Thank you, Madam President. For the public record, I just want to state that this issue is a racial equity issue. And I believe that folks should be voting no. I will be voting no on this item today. I think that we have the opportunity to create a new and better future for the racially concentrated areas of poverty of our city. This item does not accomplish this. This sets us behind. And so I look forward to the day where, as a, as a council, we can start owning that narrative and that story and that experience in a better way, and that we can start turning the patterns of institutional racism around. I do want to thank the community for being here. I want to thank you for all the work that you have done to raise the issue in the community, to share the understanding amongst your neighbors and your families and other elected officials. I think you can see that we have a huge challenge before us, and I think you know that we're going to need a more serious campaign behind this. I encourage foundations and philanthropic partners to invest dollars and hire more organizers to be able to bring this issue forward more forcefully, because clearly, we don't have the votes to turn our communities around right now. We have people power. We have spirit. We have love. We have compassion. We have commitment. But we need a plan, and we need to come here stronger and better. And you see the people that are here supporting you. You see the people that aren't. So I just want to make sure that you take this as a challenge, not as a way that we've been beaten down or that we lost again, but really, what have we learned, and what are we going to do better, and how can we bring more fire and energy to the table? So thank you for being here today with your children and your beautiful signs. I have three kids of my own, and this is why we need to do this work. So I, I thank you for being here.
Any further discussion on? Any further discussion on Ways and Means item number eight? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
No.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsani?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Fry?
No.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
No.
Kano?
No.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Liddon?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are nine ayes and four noes.
That item is approved. That we dispense with the Ways and Means report. So we're on to zoning and planning. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam President. We have just two items today from zoning and planning. Item number one is regarding an interim use permit application for a principal parking facility at 718 West Broadway. The committee had sent this forward without recommendation. I will move Councilmember Yang's amendment that everyone has in front of them. And item number two is approving eight individuals to serve on the Minneapolis Arts Commission. As I've said before, we're very thankful to these and the other volunteers that serve on our boards and commissions. And I'll move, then again, Councilmember Yang's motion on item number one, and move forward item number two.
Councilmember Bender has moved, Councilmember Yang's motion, which is in front of you, zoning and planning committee number one, which moves approval of the interim use permit submitted by Station 19 Architects on behalf of Sanctuary Covenant Church to allow a surface parking lot located at 718 West Broadway subject to the following amended conditions, and there are number five conditions. Councilmember Yang?
Thank you, Madam President. If I can speak to the motion, that'd be great.
Why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Thank you, and I, I hope you all can bear with me on this. You know, first off, I wanted to give a shout out to Sanctuary Church and its members, many of whom are in the audience right now. Now, with, with an issue like parking, I mean, it, it was kind of strange that, I mean, it was, it was quite a fight, but we got to a good place, I hope. And so, you know, with, with this, I've thought a lot about faith recently while working on this issue with Sanctuary Covenant Church. First and foremost, I want to thank them, and I want them to know that they are welcomed in Ward Five. For a site on West Broadway that has sat vacant for years, they were the ones to step up to do something. They have a lot of faith, and for that, they should be applauded. Sanctuary Church knows they are doing something very different. They are building a church in an urban commercial corridor that some consider to be the heart of North Minneapolis. Not only that, they have promised a Phase Two in the next few years that will be a commercial development. I have faith that they will do what they say. Sanctuary Church has an estimated 500 members, according to their architects and one who is out there right now. The rule of thumb for church parking is two to one in terms of people to parking spaces. Applying that rule of thumb to building a church on West Broadway would have had an absurd result. 250 parking spaces on West Broadway is, in my view, insane, and should have meant that Sanctuary stayed away from West Broadway. However, Sanctuary was willing to do things differently. So when this interim use permit was brought forth with only 50 parking spaces, it might have seemed reasonable to allow it. But the problem was that any sort of surface parking lot of that scale would have gone against the spirit of the West Broadway Alive Plan, and it would have precluded future developments. This compromise of only 25 parking spaces is in line with Sanctuary doing things differently. After conversations with staff and Sanctuary, we are here. No one's happy. Everyone gets something, and I think this is a win for all of us, I hope. This motion represents a negotiated compromise between Sanctuary Church and the city. I thank Pastor Edwards, Pastor Holtz, and everyone at Sanctuary for believing, for compromising, and for doing things differently. I thank city staff, especially Mailing Smith, for helping us get here. I thank Councilmember Bender's office for helping us get here as well. And I especially want to thank my- After a lot of negotiation, we have an agreement which may allow everyone's faith to be realized. Today, I'm asking for my colleagues to support amending the staff recommendation on this item with the following conditions, and you have the motion before you, but it reduces the stalls to 25 parking stalls. It asks the church to landscape at least 100 feet back from West Broadway, and it asks the permit be allowed for five years until 2021. Some of the congregants at Sanctuary must be wondering why their council member is so hung up on parking for a church. My concerns with this are ensuring the viability, the opportunity, the development of West Broadway. The church, which has no experience with commercial development, will face many challenges with their development plan for the parcel. I hope the reduced parking will create the greatest opportunities for development. I hope that this 25-space parking will be only temporary with a better solution before us in five years, and I hope that the space between West Broadway and the parking lot will be used by the church and the community in a productive manner until such time, and I hope it's very short, that a brand-new commercial development is built. Development on West Broadway will take everyone, even churches. We are taking Sanctuary Church and their 500 members at their word that they will develop something commercial on West Broadway in five years or less. Sanctuary must be different from others who have promised but haven't delivered on developing on West Broadway. And I'm going to close with this, because we're talking about faith. The Bible features several parables about the humble mustard seed. With some watering intended, a mustard seed will grow into a large tree. Like the mustard seed, when tended, faith can grow into something sturdy, permanent, and nourishing. I have faith that the vision of Sanctuary, or the vision Sanctuary has for this parcel, will grow into a permanent and nourishing part of West Broadway. All of North Minneapolis will be watching faithfully.
On -- Councilmember Bender?
Thank you, Madam President. Well, I don't have anything as eloquent to say about parking, but I did just want to commend Councilmember Yang and the applicant for coming to this agreement. It's such a big deal, and taking on parking is a really emotional topic, and again, Councilmember Yang really showed a lot of leadership and foresight here, making sure that this opportunity along Broadway, that we are all going to work together to realize, wasn't precluded by the parking. And so I think this is really preserving an incredible opportunity. We have a faith organization that's willing to take a risk and invest in the community, and again, you'll have our support as we all move forward into that next phase. So again, thanks, Councilmember Yang, for taking on parking.
Any further discussion on the zoning and planning report? Councilmember Frye?
Thank you, Madam President. Just echoing Councilmember Bender's sentiment, Councilmember Yang, you're doing such a wonderful job rejuvenating that area over there, and I really commend you for it, and even if it is just parking, the collaboration that you've shown to the community, I think, is exemplary. So thanks to you, thanks to the community.
On Councilmember Yang's motion, which is to, since the report was sent forward without recommendation, his motion is in front of us to approve the interim use permit. And then item two is the Arts Commission appointments. And that's it, I think, yes. So on those two items for zoning and planning, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Yang?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Quincy?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Frye?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Liddon?
Aye.
President Johnson?
Aye.
There are thirteen ayes.
Those items are adopted. The zoning and planning report is adopted. Next, we have the introduction and referral calendar, and the first item is a pursuant to notice motion by Councilmember Worsami is introducing the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to purchasing disposal of surplus property for first reading and referral to the Ways and Means Committee, adding provisions related to donation of city property. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Under resolutions, we have the honorary resolution honoring Peter Ginder for his service and dedication to the city of Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have the 2016 Parkinson's Disease Month honorary resolution, passage of the resolution recognizing April 2016 as Parkinson's Disease Month. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Number three, we have 2016 Mehika New Year honorary resolution, passage of a resolution honoring the historic relationships among the Dakota Anishinaabe and Naua and other indigenous nations and recognizing the Mehika New Year Nahu Te P'ak Day in Minneapolis. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Under new business, we have a tobacco license dealers in the C-1 district ordinance. I'm giving notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to tobacco dealers, amending provisions related to tobacco dealers in the C-1 zoning district. That notice is given. And next, I am giving notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code relating to administration, personnel amending provisions related to severance pay for appointed employees. That notice is given. Any announcements?